I'd like to welcome you all to the October 23 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now called to order. As you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We do have some very special guests here with us this evening. I asked Dr. Bracy would come forward and introduce them at this time.
Alright, thank you Chair Patillo and good evening everyone. Welcome to the October 23 meeting here of Portsmouth Public Schools School Board. So tonight I have the pleasure to introduce to you all and welcome Lakeview Elementary School to the meeting tonight. And they have some special guests that will be leading us with the pledge of allegiance as well as the school statement. So, Principal Ms. Megan Parker, if you will please come forward and I do want to recognize Ms. Haynes, I see you now. Good evening to you, who's assistant principal there. And as Ms. Megan Parker comes forward, I will read our special guest tonight. So, tonight for probably I think the first time, we have a dynamic duo that's going to be leading us in the pledge. We have Titan Flores and Connor Simkins. So if you all will... So while you all are coming, let me read a little information to give you all a little background. Titan is a fourth grader and he's enthusiastic about baseball, and he's an enthusiastic baseball player. And a committed to, he's a member of Restore Church. He wants to become an engineer when he grows up and often spends his time taking things apart and reassembling them to better understand how they work. He's the son of Mr. and Mrs. Jason Flores. And if you all, will you please stand and be recognized parents? So next Connor is a second grade student at Lakeview Elementary. And some of his favorite things are spending time outdoors and riding his bike. In fact, his longest bike ride is 11 miles. Very impressive. When he grows up, Connor aspires to become a lineman. He's the son of Mr. and Mrs. Michael Simkins. And Mr. and Mrs. Simkins, if you all will wave and be recognized. And providing us with our school statement, we have Isaiah Snead. Isaiah is a dedicated sixth grade honor roll student. He's a member of Lakeview Elementary's SCA. And he is actively involved in his church and takes pride in giving back to his community through volunteer work. Isaiah assists his elderly neighbors by taking out the trash and mowing their lawns. A passionate and avid baseball player, Isaiah aspires to attend college and pursue a career in architecture. He's the proud son of Mrs. Markeisha Williams and Mr. Travis Ely. And the other, okay, there you are. So before, before we get started with the pledge, parents of the special guests, if you all want to come up front so you have a better view. Take pictures, video, please come forward at this time. Yeah, please come on up.
Stand of the, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now please receive it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Patillo and Dr. Bracy, School Board members and honored guests. My name is Isaiah Snead. I'm a proud sixth grader at Lakeview Elementary School, home of the Dolphins. We are honored to be recognized as a Purple Star, as a Purple Star School supporting 26 military connected families. I also have the privilege of serving as one of the four Purple Star Student Ambassadors. Lakeview is home to 426 students and 65 dedicated staff members. October is a bully prevention month and our school has been actively participating in the Be a Buddy, Not a Bully campaign. Students who have demonstrated kindness and positive behavior receive buddy badges from the teacher as a sign of recognition. Recognition, our school offers a variety of fun, enriching activities. We have, we have an active student council association, also known as SCA, Audience of the Mind Team, Girls on the Run, Steel Pan Music Group, Cheer Squad, Trailblazers, and Blessed Girls Program. This year, we also added exciting new programs like Rise, Art Club, the Lakeview Choir, Buck Club, and Home. We are also, we are also proud of our strong parent involvement programs like Watch Dog and Mother Bears. Led by our family engagement liaison, provided opportunities for families to stay connected. We also have parent advisory committee and a very active PTA. Lakeview is truly a wonderful place to learn and grow. Our administrators and teachers ensure that our school is safe and welcoming environment where we feel like family. One of my favorite parts of our school is the PBIS Dolphin Market. We use the class dojo points we earn, we earn for good behavior to shop for items. Right now, I'm saving up my points for the Giant Stub Dolphin, which is my favorite prize. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm proud to be a Lakeview Elementary Dolphin. Good night, everybody.
Before, before they take their seats, we do have some special presentations. We're going to need Titan to come back up as well. And Connor.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Patillo, Dr. Bracy, School Board members, thank you for giving Lakeview the opportunity to present before you tonight. And you are always welcome at the Dolphin Family School. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just, I just want to say Ms. Megan Parker, as a fellow alumni of Lakeview Elementary School. From 1983 to 1986, you all did an amazing job and upheld the Dolphin proud. Thank you, proud, thank y'all so much. Well, now I have agenda item 3.5, which is our School Board Mission Statement. Dr. Walker.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, attendance. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here. Here.
Here. Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7, consideration of the agenda for October 23, 2025, and entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Futreal, second by Ms. Schumake. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, I'm excited, is our Student Representative Report. Ms. Alexis Daughtry.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the School Board and Superintendent. My name is Alexis Daughtry and I'm honored to serve as the Student Representative for the Portsmouth Public Schools. As a Student Representative for the Portsmouth Public Schools, I see firsthand the impact of mental health and their struggles. Of substance use and chronic absenteeism that it has on my peers. Behind every absence is a story, sometimes of anxiety, grief, caregiving, or addiction. My name is Alexis Daughtry. I'm a senior at Manor High School and I participate in field hockey, indoor and outdoor track, and the Family Career Community Leaders of America. I decided to become the School Board Representative because I care about making sure that every student's voice is heard. I believe that when students, staff, and our community work together, we can create a space where everyone feels safe and valued. Thrive Together is a student-led initiative that responds to these challenges with compassion, leadership, and action. It's not just a program, it's a movement to help students feel seen, supported, and empowered. Thrive Together begins with a Peer Wellness Ambassador Program, which encourages students to serve as peer mentors and wellness advocates. These ambassadors lead monthly Thrive Talks that focus on mental health awareness, coping strategies, and substance use prevention. Each session creates a safe space for honest conversations among students to feel supported. Our goal is to build culture and belonging and support in every school where students feel seen, heard, and valued. The program also connects students to Hazel Health Telehealth Counseling Services, ensuring that they have access to professional mental health support whenever they need it. These goals come to life with our monthly Thrive Talks where students lead open discussion about wellness and mental health. A Thrive Talk is a 30 to 45 minute student-led discussion that creates a safe space where students talk about mental health, wellness, and real-life challenges these students face. Essentially, Thrive Talks are mental health check-ins where students learn a quick overview of stress, anxiety, and coping strategies. An example of a Thrive Talk is an interaction with a mood map where students play sticky notes or vote on how they're feeling and discuss small ways to support each other. With Thrive, with, with Thrive Talks, we're focusing on expanding student leaders, increasing participation, and tracking how students belong, impact, how students belonging in school impact their attendance and engagement. I believe that when students feel connected, they thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Thank you for your time and continued support of the student voice, of student voices and wellness in Portsmouth. Together, we can make sure every student knows we all matter here. Thank you.
That was an amazing presentation. Do we have comments from Board Members? Vice Chair.
Thank you Alexis for the presentation. I see you shifted your focus to mental health. What made you shift to mental health versus the traits?
Being in school, I see that a lot of students need help with mental health as if like they're not coming school, to school because they don't feel well or if they have problems at home. And I just feel like it's important that these students feel supported inside and outside of school so that they can come to school and show up.
Okay, thank you for that. Great answer. Now how are you going to spread the word to the other schools so they are participating in the Thrive Talks so they'll be aware of this?
I plan on reaching out to the principals and guidance counselors at the schools. And they will pick ambassadors based off of application that they will submit to their principals and their guidance counselors. And they will put together, they will come together and they will come up with the, I will come up with the Thrive Talks that they will have at each of the schools. And they will all put together the example that I showed you of the mood activity. And it will be placed in the libraries or cafeterias for all students to participate.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Futreal.
Thank you Chair. Excellent job. I'm so excited about Thrive Talks. So, the only question I have is when it's up and running, can we get an invite?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schumake.
Thank you Chair. I just want to say this is fantastic. I don't even know if you know this or not, but you have basically created an IOP. That is awesome. And you have implemented a peer recovery group, which is also a part of IOP. I think this is fantastic.
Thank you.
Like you, you're already starting on your journey before you even graduate, love. I love this for you and this is necessary. And I love that you acknowledge that there's an issue and you found a solution. Bravo.
Any other Board Members? Ms. McSwain.
I try not to say anything Alexis, but listen, it's hard. This presentation was outstanding. I thank you for the visual and everything and the way you basically used it as an outline and didn't go verbatim. I was watching all of that and I appreciate it. Thank you so much for the information and I can't wait to see the outcome as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Great job.
Thank you.
Agenda item five point one is our two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven division calendar. Ms. Nalasco.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. Tonight, you have the administrative recommendation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven instructional calendar for your consideration and vote. As a reminder, this calendar recommendation includes the following: three teacher workdays, five professional development days, a two-week winter break, a five-day spring break, and observances for Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, and Presidents' Day. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from board members? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Futrell, second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Ms. Schumay.
Thank you, Chair. Really quickly, this is the one that we discussed previously and this is the one that everyone collectively chose.
Yes, this was based off the survey results that we received and hearing from our community constituency, we did move forward with, yes, that this is the start date from August twenty-fourth, ending in date of June eleventh.
I just wanted that to be said so that everybody understands that this is not something that we just came up with. Although we have discussed this before, sometimes we have to provide a quick reminder. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, any further discussion? We have a motion in the second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. McSwain?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessoms?
Yes.
Ms. Schumay?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you so much, agenda item six point one to six point four, consent agenda items, I entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Ms. Sessoms. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. McSwain?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessoms?
Yes.
Ms. Schumay?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you so much, agenda items seven point one and seven point two are non-agenda and board agenda item speakers. Do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes. Yes, we do. As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the school board of the city of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the school board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of the scheduled meeting. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly at any comments by speakers. A written copy of speakers' comments can be left with the clerk of the board and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens the public comment, the audience is asked to respectfully, excuse me, asked to be respectful of all speakers. All righty, the first is Brian Jackson. The second?
I saw that you were still speaking. Did I come up too early?
No, no, you're fine. I'm just getting the timer for you.
Am I good?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board. My name is Brian Jackson, the second. My wife, she couldn't be here tonight, but because she's watching our son. And my son's name is Brian K. Jackson, the third. He is visually impaired and autistic and he has an active IEP, an Individual Education Program. Our family is very unique. We're also very proactive in what we do because we have to make sure that our son has a stable pattern that's not disrupted. And if it is disrupted, we have enough time to talk and walk him through that change because life, you know, life happens. So, we have to make sure that he's able to adjust and pivot through his autism. With that, we spoke to him months ago before moving into the city of Portsmouth and I know I said that wrong, so I apologize in advance, letting him know that we're moving into this home. This is our first time owning a home. We're first-time home buyers and we're very excited about that. We do have a bit of buyer's remorse, not from the purchase of the home, but from our experience with the school board or with the public school system. It has been marked by repeated noncompliance with Brian's IEP and consistency in transparency, communication, as well as ongoing transportation issues that have led to serious impacts on both Brian's well-being and my family's stability. When Brian transferred from his previous school district, he came with a legally binding IEP that detailed his needs, that included a bus aid to support his safety and his coping skills during transportation. And in order to have a bus aid, you must have a bus. Upon his transfer to Portsmouth, that service appears to have been removed from his current IEP with the Portsmouth Public School District. Along with the difficulty in coping with unstructured situations, it appears to also have, to have been removed. Those changes were made without data or assessment to support them, yet we were asked to sign a new IEP, which we have not done because it does not reflect his needs or align with his prior supports. As stated, we are a proactive family. So, with that, my wife enrolled our son into Manor High School, but he attends Plan B Academy, which is a special needs school. That enrollment took place June thirtieth and the district received a copy of his IEP at that time, but despite receiving his documentation in advance, the district failed to provide transportation for his first day of school on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the transportation problems have continued since. The first incident was July fourteen, between July fourteenth and July twenty twenty-four, my wife and I had to transport our son for eight days to school, back and forth. When the first transportation service arrived, and if I can back up just a little bit, when we enrolled, we were told that this would be a swift and smooth transition. And when we talk about transportation, a reasonable person would think and assume that when you talk about K through twelve and you talk about transportation to school, one assumes a bus. When the transportation service showed up, it was a third-party transportation. It was a car that showed up. The person that was in the car, we had no idea who that was. So, mind you, you have to think about my son, who is visually impaired. Would you get into a car where you don't know that individual? However, when I sent an email asking where the bus was, that email went ignored. Our son had to get into the car. He had an issue. I can voice my frustrations verbally and written, as well as anyone in this room. My son voices his frustration and communicates with behaviors. That's the only way he can communicate. So, with that behavior, the transportation has been cut abruptly, very quick. At six-thirty at night, my wife and I get a text message saying, summarizing, that he does not have transportation and we will be responsible in the interim. When they finally found another transportation service, that too was abrupt, abruptly stopped. So, between September eleventh and the nineteenth, for seven days, my wife and I had to transport our son. Once we found another transportation company or the school district found another transportation company, again, behaviors happen. Again, it stops. September twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, my wife and I, for four days, had to transport our son. Keep in mind, September twenty-sixth, Brian missed a full day of school because my wife and I are extremely exhausted. We get up and we have to be late for work and then we leave work hours early. Time? Oh.
You can continue.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I will try to speed it up. Because of these continued transportation issues, the fact that my wife and I were still having to transport our son, we called an IEP meeting on September thirtieth. During that meeting, the director of transportation cited budgets and forecasting issues as reasons that Brian does not have a bus. I explained to him that I understand budgets and issues, but I also explained that there is reserve for extraordinary circumstances, which Brian's situation clearly qualifies as. The discussion switched to a new transportation provider and that director, the director of transportation dropped from the meeting in its entirety. The meeting, the IEP meeting, provided no clear resolution, no immediate action plan, no backup to that action plan, and no guidance on how our family would be reimbursed for that travel. Because we are, again, very proactive in what we do, we do our research and we've stumbled on the fact that we can get reimbursement. However, even with that reimbursement, we were told that we can only get reimbursement from home to school and back. My question is, how come we can't get reimbursement from our job? Because we have to leave our job in order to get our son that's reasonable transportation. It's not an unreasonable request. On October first, I sent an email expressing that our family is under immense stress, that the district's failure to provide consistent and reliable bus transportation continues to harm Brian's well-being. In that message, I stated, and I quote, "The stress level we are carrying and the issues we are facing as a family does not equate to an extra twelve-point-six miles a day for reimbursement." But the rebuttal that we get from is some defamatory statement about whose fault it is. And when I say defamatory, I sent that email saying that we are continuing to have bus issues. The reply that we got was, "It is not the Portsmouth School District's fault that Brian is having issues. It is his because he's the one having issues." That is a summary, that is not for text, verbatim. The district's excuse has been that the issues stem from Brian's behaviors, but earlier I stated, this is a direct result of his disruption in the structured environment, which is explicitly documented in his previous IEP. Most recently, there was another change in drivers, which led to another issue, unexpected change caused additional behaviors. I made this very clear. In October nine, twenty twenty-five, we received a last-minute text, yet again, saying that our services will be disrupted. Because of the frustration that I had, I sent an email stating I needed a developed backup plan right then and there, that evening, stating that someone, even stating that someone from the district come and get our son so that they can feel the issues that we are feeling. And I find it very ironic that once I made that comment, backup plan materialized that night and my son was able to get to school. This raises the question that when a bus, or not bus, excuse me, when a car driver decides to say they don't want to drive him anymore and they can, because it's their personal car, what happens and whose responsibility is it to get Brian to school? That question has to be answered with us, my wife and myself, and we are very stressed, very tired. And as you all know, when you work, you have to attend your job. And if you have attendance problems, you can end up with corrective actions up until, including termination. I do thank God that we are not in that situation. However, what we're dealing with is very unsustainable. We have reached out to everyone that we could, including the superintendent's office, but without meaningful response, I escalated the situation to the state superintendent's office, the director of pupil transportation, and the parent embusment for special education. My request has been and remains consistent, a swift and decisive resolution that ensures compliance with Brian's IEP and restores the trust and stability in our family. I will note that I did receive a message from Dr. Sterling White. He contacted me earlier this week to gain an understanding of why I'm coming to the school board. I explained to Dr. White, the reason why I'm coming to you all is because I need y'all to understand that we are a fresh family, very new to the city of Portsmouth, very new to the neighborhood, but we are not getting the neighborhood treatment. Ongoing transportation failures and noncompliance have caused anxiety, behavior setbacks, and emotional distress for my son, for our family. This has meant chronic stress, missed work, sleepless nights, and daily disruptions. I want y'all to understand and envision respectfully that every night, my wife and I wait by our phone to get a text message that says we no longer have transportation so that we can adjust on the fly. My wife wanted to adjust her school, excuse me, her work schedule and I said, "No, do not do that." We get up every morning and while we're at work between seven forty-five and seven fifty a.m., we look on our Ring Doorbell camera just to make sure that somebody is showing up because if they don't, we have to leave our job to make sure that Brian gets to school. We have done everything possible to work with the school system in good faith and yet we still face the same problems without accountability or relief. We respectfully ask that the Portsmouth School Board would review and ensure full compliance with Brian's original IEP, reinstate the bus aid, and all other supports removed without justification. Simply put, please put my son on a bus. Our son has special needs, I get that. But we also see buses that come through our neighborhood for all these able-bodied children. My question is, because my son is not able-bodied and goes to a different school, he doesn't get afforded a bus? He's had one for thirteen, fourteen years and we transfer him to the Portsmouth City and he no longer has reliable transportation. Restore his IEP language regarding Brian's difficulty in coping in structured situations. Resolve our reimbursement dispute, because come on, man. Excuse my language, that, my apologies. It's not unreasonable to ask that we come from our jobs hours early and the work that we have to miss or training that we have to miss to be reimbursed for twelve-point-six miles per day. It's not unreasonable. We're not asking for special treatment, only fair treatment and adherence to the law. Our son deserves a consistent, structured, and safe education experience, which states, which includes safe and reliable bus transportation and our family deserves relief from the burden we've been forced to shoulder. We ask the board to act decisively to correct these ongoing failures and restore trust, stability, and support that every family in this school district should be able to count on, including ours. I do apologize for running over. Thank you all and God bless.
I'm missing, thanks so much, Mr. Jackson.
Bring this down a little bit. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Dr. Patillo, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, and members of the Portsmouth School Board. My name is Sharice Hargrove and I stand before you tonight on behalf of my niece Kenya Hargrove, a devoted physical education teacher who served Crowder Elementary School with heart, excellence, and unwavering commitment. Kenya asked me to speak not for sympathy, but for truth. Her story deserves to be heard, not buried in silence, not brushed aside. It is a story of resilience, betrayal, and urgent need for change in how this district treats its education when they are educators, excuse me, when they are at their most vulnerable. In November twenty twenty-four, Kenya was diagnosed with breast cancer. Just a month later, she began aggressive treatment to include chemotherapy, a double mastectomy, and radiation. She is still undergoing treatment today and yet, throughout this grueling journey, she remains deeply connected to her students and her school community. She continued to send lesson ideas, check in with her team, and express concern that her students weren't receiving the consistency. They need it because Kenya, teaching isn't just a job for her. It's her calling. But while Kenya showed up for her school community, the system did not show up for her. The support she received was minimal, communication was sparse, encouragement was nearly nonexistent. She felt unseen, forgotten, discarded, despite her years of service and the life-threatening battles she was fighting. She tried to maintain her provisional teaching license. She was told that passing the Praxis exam would suffice. But how do you pass a high-stake exam while enduring chemotherapy? Induce brain fog and exhaustion. Kenya requested a medical extension. She was told she could, it could not be done despite the Virginia Department of Education's confirming that such extensions are possible at the discretion of the superintendent or the board. That discretion never, was never- That discretion never, was never exercised, that compassion was never extended. Instead, Kenya faced a financial hardship, emotional strain, and a devastating lack of guidance, and then came the final blow. She learned through coworkers, not human resources, not administration, that she had been separated from her position and placed into retirement. No one called, no one emailed, and no one explained. Her work email was shut off, cutting off her, cutting her off from critical documentation and correspondence. She never got to say goodbye to the children she loved and prayed to return to. On September 26th, 2025, she came to, she went to the school to pick up her belongings. The children saw her there, and they ran up to her, excited, thinking that she was back at work. But she wasn't, and she couldn't tell them why. That moment broke her heart. Let me be clear. Kenya is not asking for her job back. She is asking for accountability, for compassion, for communication, for a system that does not abandon its educators when they are fighting for their lives. She is grateful for those who stood by her, especially her encore team, to include Ms. Weathers, and for the bell-ringing celebration that marked the end of her chemotherapy. But gratitude does not erase injustice. Celebration does not excuse silence. Tonight, Kenya's story is a call to action. It is a demand that no other educator in Portsmouth Public Schools be treated with such disregard, that no one else be left to navigate illness alone, that no one else be quietly removed without dignity, without closure, without care. The public deserves to know how this was handled, and you as leaders must answer for it. I have a copy of Kenya's original letter. She could not be here tonight due to treatment, but her voice is here, her truth is here, and it would not be ignored. I just want to add that I am a 30-year breast cancer survivor, so I know her struggle. I too suffer with lymphedema. But in spite of, Kenya is thriving, she's doing well. Thank you for your time. Dr. Chairman, Chairman Dr. Patillo, I'm sorry, Dr. Bracy, and board members, for taking Kenya's story to heart.
Thank you so much. I'm Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, if it's, Chair, if, I don't know how we would do it, if we can add a closed session to the end, if it's the consensus of the board, but based on these two public comments, I think we as a board, if we heavy, we shouldn't let it go. I think we need to have a discussion.
We would need a motion and a second to amend the agenda, add a closed meeting at the end.
Okay. I move that we add a closed session as item 10.2 to our agenda for personnel matters.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Atkinson, second, by Ms. Futrell. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. McLean?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessions?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you so much. Do we have any more speakers?
Yes. Katrina Castle?
Good evening, board members, superintendent's office. I think we're acquainted, so I'll skip some of the formalities. I did want to say thank you, first of all, for carrying my concerns forward in your work session. I watched that video, and it was heartening, you know, not just as a concerned citizen, but also as a social studies teacher, to see some of those participatory and representative elements of our democracy at work. I did appreciate that. I was a little less impressed with the way that those concerns were perhaps addressed, the implication, I maybe hadn't done my homework, I thought was particularly interesting. I heard, I think it was Representative Schumake this evening say that the calendar option is not something that was simply chose, and that was just chosen, that these were options that were brought forward, they were debated, there was public response to that, we had a survey and everything, I mentioned the survey. But one of the things that I noticed was not mentioned, was that we actually really didn't have very much of a choice. There was a little bit of a lack of transparency with one of those options that we didn't talk about this evening, and I think that now that we've chosen, and it is obvious that, you know, one of the choices was more preferred, one of the options was 19 days before Labor Day, and that would have required a waiver from the state in order for that calendar option to be approved, because there is a law that says you can't start school more than 14 days before Labor Day. But that wasn't in the survey, that one of those options would have required a waiver, that there would have needed to be a caveat before that that could actually be implemented. And that waiver would need to get approval, and there are very specific circumstances in which waivers like that are approved. It's rare. It's an old law. But that wasn't mentioned there. It wasn't mentioned in the work session, and that leads to the impression of something that we occasionally call an illusion of choice, that one of those options wasn't really an option, because it couldn't be implemented without a waiver. We didn't have a waiver, and the VDOE has confirmed they didn't receive a request for a waiver either. And so without that waiver, we can't implement that. And so the public needs to be aware that what they're really getting, what I had said in my previous comments, that the full scope of what is being presented is being voted on. Otherwise, the vote loses its meaning, because we don't really have a choice, there isn't really an option. And I did also appreciate that we have shifted some of the language. I think I heard that we're calling them teacher workdays now, not just staff days, even though the staff language does make it a little more inclusive for people that do work in the building. It really does matter how we phrase those days, because teachers have a lot of work that needs to get done. And I did some math. Three teacher workdays in a 178-day calendar, that's every approximately nine weeks, with the exception of the fourth quarter, 7.5 hours of teacher work time. Now, I read fast, I read about 400 words per minute, so it's not amazing, but it's fast. And that would mean, with the 78 students that I have on my caseload currently, it would take me to read an essay assignment of anywhere between 500 and 1,000 words, about eight hours to grade one assignment. I teach three classes a day, five days a week, 78 kids, average of two assignments per week. I get a planning period every day, so that's about seven and a half hours every week, and I get one day, one workday, every approximately 45 days in this calendar. When do I conference? When do I lesson plan? When do I meet with my PLCs? When do I have department meetings? When do I have faculty meetings? When do I have, I see the professional development days, I see the five professional development days, and it reminds me, and I'll make this as a closing thought, that calendars and budgets aren't just functional documents, they're moral documents. They tell us about what our priorities are. And professional development is important. I chose this week to do, instead of two hours of professional development, six hours of professional development, because I went to something that was being put on in Norfolk, and it was really enlightening. I love professional development. But when we have an abundance of professional development and an absence of teacher work time, we don't have time to implement the professional development, and we don't have time to do all those other really important things that we need to get done. Those teacher workdays are valuable, I'm glad they're there, I'm glad we're calling them teacher workdays, because that means that there's a likelihood that that unrestricted, unstructured time will be respected. But I think it is important that we clarify how we talk about those days, and how we include those days, and how we look at how this calendar is going to and has been impacting teachers. We're at about 10 weeks now, and we haven't had a break, except for the one day this week, and part of that day was professional development. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jessica Rising?
Hello.
Good evening. Well, I said, "Good evening," I'm sorry.
Oh, good evening, hi. I brought notes from what I was going to say, as you will see, we'll change it a little bit, but I think.
You can bring it back to the clerk. Thank you so much.
So I was going to discuss the two options put forward in the survey. Obviously, the vote was taken before I got up here, and I will say, I can't be happier to be up here to say thank you than I would have been, you know, to be up here to try to persuade you. So I am, I do want to appreciate, I do want to appreciate out loud the reasons why I think, I think that is a decision made in the student's better interest and the faculty. But it, I would be remiss if I didn't support what my colleague just said about several of her comments, in particular, the lack of any meaningful break between August and December, and the amount of real time, not scheduled necessarily, but real time that we end up getting for teacher workdays. I too am really psyched to see on the new schedule, it designated as teacher workdays. For a point of comparison, we had one earlier this week on Wednesday, and I had a meeting that went from 8:00 to 10:00 that was scheduled for that day, and I had another meeting that went from 10:00 to 1:00. And in the meantime, there was driving, there was lunch, so the amount of time I actually had to work, and what would have been a normally scheduled teacher workday, was about two and a half hours. And that, as my colleague said, is two and a half hours so far this semester, in addition to normal, normal planning periods, during some of which we have to proctor exams, we have to do hall duty, and all those things are things that we've signed up to do, but I do want to recognize how important teacher workdays are, and advocate for a greater proportion of the time scheduled for actual work. As a point of reference, in the teacher development that we got, we had some really good resources given to us. Unfortunately, since we had final exams to grade, and final projects to grade, and a new half of a semester to plan for, and grades to finalize, all of us left the meeting, closed the window, and like, we'll be lucky if we look at it again, or at least if we look at it again, with the same kind of context that we had going into it. In other words, as my colleague said, we love getting new opportunities, new materials, new opportunities to work with them, but if we don't have time to develop that, nobody can implement a lesson with materials they've never seen before. So substantial time needs to be planned for that. That's one thing. So, and I can't emphasize enough, too, that we are all at our best when we are rested, and when we are enthused and refreshed, and that leads into what I was going to say as pertains to why I think you all made an excellent decision tonight in terms of when the calendar ends, in particular for the fall. The reason is that I've worked in a school district that has a December end date. It's one of those things that looks like a great idea on paper, but has disastrous effects in practice. And the reason that I will never voluntarily work in a school district again, that goes from whenever in the summer to ending at, right before holiday break, is because everybody is exhausted, student behavior is off the charts in December, kids are getting sick right and left, faculty are getting sick right and left. We've had a lot of really meaningful, and I think important, discussion about mental health tonight, and I think that that needs to, that needs to continue, it's really important. And one of those things that happens in December, especially if we try to cram everybody through before Christmas, is that everybody is at their breaking point in December. Students don't have the grace of the two-week of holiday break that many of them every year take to go from a failing grade into a passing territory. So thank you for making that decision on all of our, you know, emotional and physical and academic well-being. I appreciate that. And just to reiterate, thank you for considering more work time for us in the future, and just, just to slip this in there, if ever in the future, it comes across your desks to perhaps consider a fall break that's more than a couple of days, like a fall break, maybe mid-October, early October, I have worked in districts that have that, and that has a real benefit on everybody's, on everybody's performance, teachers and students alike, whether it's a four-day, a five-day break, it makes a big difference. If Thanksgiving is the only break that we get between August and December, and people are traveling, and people are hosting, and people are out of their minds, it's, it's a lot. So thank you for, for making a good decision for the, for the upcoming school year calendar, and I appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Agenda item 8.1 is a resolution for American Education Week. Dr. White.
Good evening, School Board Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy. Our resolution, whereas advocates for children, we work to provide opportunities for them to acquire the tools, skills, and knowledge required for the success in life, and whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is committed to maintaining our school's roles as places of discovery and innovation, and the board is committed to ensuring that our graduates have remarkable, remarkable skills, and whereas the professional faculty has a duty to provide a complete and competitive education for all students, and whereas by Presidential Proclamation 5403, our nation will pause once again for the annual observance of American Education Week, November 17th through the 21st, 2025, with this year's theme, "Together for Safe, Just, and Equitable Schools." Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board reaffirms its commitment to public education and recognize that everyone shares in the responsibility for providing a high-quality education for our children, and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth local government and citizens be called upon to continue their support of a quality-ed education for every student, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be archived as part of Portsmouth Public School Board's official records.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Futrell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. McLean? Yes.
Ms. Sessions?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.1, monthly report, curriculum instruction, Dr. DeVries.
Good evening, School Board Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy. We're gonna have a lot today to talk about, as you know. There has been a change in the literacy landscape in the state of Virginia. Over the past two years, we've kept you apprised of those changes, and we are here today to bring you some updates about how we're addressing our literacy gaps and working on student achievement in the area of literacy from pre-K all the way up to 12th grade. So we're gonna start today with a short video that's kind of gonna lay the foundation for where we've been and where we're going, after which our three coordinators that work with K through 12, reading and language arts, will come up here and go over some of the highlights of the work that they've done this year and last year.
So the Virginia Literacy Act is a legislation that was passed in 2022, and so we're making sure that every child in Virginia receives evidence-based literacy instruction.
We use UFLY as a whole group, so students will have a certain materials to, to use to make it easier for them to decode the word, and then spell out the words, and then segment, and at the same time, blend the word. Say, for example, I have one student who used to read, instead of reading the word "cat," she used to read it through letters like C-A-T. As we keep on doing UFLY lessons each day, she is now learning, giving the sound of each word, so I'm happy about her improvement.
So we have been using Read 180, and I excel mostly in the class, also with New Zealand. So with Read 180, we have different groups that allows them to have small group instruction with the teacher, and they get on the application, and it's kind of like they marry each other. So when we come talk in the group about different things, then they are allowed to go on the application, especially with comprehension and vocabulary, they still learn those things no matter what. I have seen improvement, especially in vocabulary, using IXL and Read 180. With IXL doing the different skills up there, they're able to break words apart, they're able to find the root word in the word and be like, well, this means that, so. So I know what this word means.
So within the Virginia Literacy Act, we've had to evolve our practices to match the science of reading. So that screener that we've always used in Virginia has been revised, and it's now called VOWs. So that VOW screener now helps us to pick out any students that are high-risk for reading difficulties, that now we can identify those students, and then now we employ our reading specialists and VOWs instructors to help close those gaps.
SPIRE is the program, the intervention program that we use. It's a specialized program for reading excellence. And we also have VOWs instructors that come in to target small groups for those kids who score high risk, as well as we look at the ones who are moderate to make sure they stay on track.
So before, it was kind of like the Wild, Wild West. You did whatever you thought your heart desired, right? Whereas now, the difference is that no matter if I get teacher A, B, or C on a grade level, I know that my student and my child, they are getting evidence-based curriculum that has been approved by the Virginia Department of Education.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, School Board Chair Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Ms. Atkinson, and School Board members. We are the Office of Reading and English. I'm Nicole Booker, Reading and English Coordinator.
Good evening, my name is Lakeisha McCoy. I am the Reading Intervention Coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Venus Usanga, Secondary Coordinator of English.
We would like to share how we are using our SOL data to improve student achievement in the area of reading and English. Thank you so kindly for watching our video. Based on our approved HQIM, which is our High Quality Instructional Materials, we wanted to provide our teachers with structure on how much time to spend on our resources. For example, K through 2 has 120 minutes, and it's displayed here, for their reading block, with an additional 30 minutes this year for intervention. Grades 4 and 5 have 62 or 83 minutes, based on the number of teachers for each grade level. The grade sections here displayed show additional 30 minutes dedicated this school year in grades K through 3 for daily reading intervention designed to help closing existing reading gaps. In elementary, we are also incorporating flexible groups this year during Tier 1 instruction to differentiate instruction for students, and VOWs instructional indicators can be addressed during this time. As you all are aware, VOW screener replaced POWs. This guide helps teachers know what resources can be used with students and how much time is allocated for each group.
As Ms. Booker discussed, VOWs, you see here that VOWs stands for the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System. So when we say VOWs, that is the screener that we're referring to that replaced POWs once before. So the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System serves two distinct purposes. For K through 3, the VOWs function as an early literacy screening tool designed to identify students at risk for reading difficulties. Now, this early warning system enables educators to provide timely, evidence-based interventions that support the development of those foundational literacy skills. Now, going to the other side, where we have now, VOWs has extended to our grades 4 through 8. So we started that this year. And grades 4 through 8, VOWs is administered to students who did not pass the previous year's reading standards of learning, that SOL test. At these grade levels, the assessment is used to determine the specific factors contributing to the student's reading comprehension challenges, which guides that targeted instructional planning that leads into the services intervention. So therefore, under continuing those compliances under the Virginia Literacy Act, we have student reading plans. So the Virginia Literacy Act, often refers to the VLA, establishes clear expectations for the development and implementation of the student reading plans through a collaborative team approach. Now, this process involves the reading specialists, classroom teachers, administrators, parents, and families working together to support the student's literacy growth. Professional development has been provided to the reading specialists on the procedures and requirements for creating and implementing the student reading plans. Now, in accordance with the Virginia Literacy Act, the reading specialist is responsible for overseeing the student reading plan process within each school building to ensure the consistency and compliance. Now, what is a student reading plan? A student reading plan is an individualized plan that outlines the evidence-based instruction and interventions designed to support students who have not met those literacy benchmarks mentioned before. The plan systematically targets the student's specific areas of need in reading and includes ongoing progress monitoring to measure growth over time of the plan. Now, who gets a plan? The student reading plan is required under Virginia Literacy Act to students in grades K through 3 who are high-risk identified by VOWs. Also, in grades 4 through 8, we are required to provide student reading plans to any grades 4 through 8 students who did not pass the previous year's SOL that scored a fail or below basic.
At the middle school level, we use NWEA MAP, VOWs, and SOL data to provide intervention through targeted small group instruction for those that did not do well, or provide enrichment for those who are mastering skills. Middle school has also moved to an AB schedule, where the alternate ELA days with intervention or enrichment days, as you see here.
All right. We have been afforded the opportunity to work with our Virginia, our VLP coaches. They are from the Virginia Literacy Partnership. They support our elementary and our secondary ELA support team monthly. To provide professional development that helps us to support the wide variety of levels of teachers, we serve by sharing evidence-based instructional strategies that are aligned with our HQIM, known as our High Quality Instructional Materials, as well as our new 2024 standards. The knowledge gained during these sessions are used as a turnkey for our teachers and staff. All righty. In addition to that, we have our elementary and secondary teachers here that are actively participating in focused after-school professional development sessions designed to build instructional capacity and strengthen classroom practice. In addition, elementary has two-week rotations called Look Fours to help monitor the implementation of our HQIM and also to support our wide variety level of teachers with targeted micro-PDs based on our findings.
And as you can recall from last year, the expectation from VDOE was for all teachers to complete the mandated VLP Canvas course sessions. Instead of PD provided by the division, we gave teachers back that time to complete the course. So thank you for those PD days in the calendar. And we also were able to give them a monetary compensation upon completion. This year, the only teachers taking Canvas course are our new teachers to the division. Do you have any questions or concerns for us?
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Board members? Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Booker, Ms. McCoy, Ms. Fungu, for that presentation. I think it answered some questions from our last work session. I see the intervention blocks for K-8. Do we have intervention blocks for high schoolers as well?
No, but we did add a course in 9th grade called our Structured Literacy Course, and that is for those students that did not pass the SOL in 8th grade. And so to give them that boost before going into English 9, they will take that Strategic Reading Course.
Gotcha. So do we continue from after they take that course from 8 and 9? Or is there like a stop period? Are we still pulling them if they're not passing?
So teachers do pull small groups in their classroom during Tier 1 instruction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Dr. Walker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I would be remiss not to say that from 2017 to 2022, this is the team that I served with as a program specialist for the Office of Reading and English. And I see that a lot of improvements have been made and continue to be made. So that's great as an advocate that I am for English and especially for special education. And I also have to say that Ms. Booker was my 5th grade teacher. And now, I get to say thank you again, Ms. Booker, for instilling the education in me to help me be a part of my educational legacy to sit here as a School Board member.
Anything else from Board members? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 9.2 is the VSBA Academy Awards. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair. So the awards, and Dr. White is going to assist me with presenting the awards to the Board members from VSBA. And it's presented in the order in which you were actually designated. So what we have, we have three areas. We have Certificate of Distinction. We have a Certificate of Honor, Certificate of Achievement, Certificate of Recognition. So actually four. So starting with the first one, Dr. Patillo receives a Starfish pin, which is a Certificate of Distinction. Also, Certificate of Distinction, Ms. Irene Boone. Another Starfish pin, Certificate of Distinction, Dr. Melvin Cotten. Next, we have the Gold Pin, Certificate of Honor, Ms. Quonea Futrell. Certificate of Achievement, Bronze Pin, Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson. Certificate of Recognition, Ms. Tamara Schumate. Tamra. No, no, look, you know what? I got that from the meeting earlier this week. Yeah, Gina messed me up. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Dr. Jaclyn Walker, also Certificate of Recognition. You know I know your name.
And we do have one more Gold Pin, Certificate of Honor, Dr. Eli Bracy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, Agenda item 10.1, Monthly Report, Dr. Bracy.
All right. All right, so good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. We have a lot of great things happening this month, so I'll jump right in. We wrapped up our first nine weeks this past Tuesday, so I want to congratulate our students and staff on a great start to the school year. It's hard to believe that we're already a quarter way through. With that, I also want to remind families that report cards will be going home next Tuesday, October 28. Next up, I'm happy to share that our Division-wide College Fair is back. Monday, October 27, we will again host the fair at Churchville High School. Students from all three of our high schools will be participating and will get to meet with college representatives one-on-one or in small groups. In fact, we have more than 60 colleges and universities who are participating this year. So we're excited for the momentum that it will create for our high schoolers. Also next week, we have two other special events in the division. First, we have the Attendance Matters Workshop that will be open to all families, kindergarten through 12th grade, hosted by our Offices of Student Support Services and Federal Programs in pre-K. This event will help families understand the importance of their child's attendance. This time together will also be used to give attendees all the information they need about resources and supports we have in place to help families maintain or improve their child's attendance. The workshop will take place at the Emily Spong Center, and it will be Wednesday, October 29 at 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 29, we have another great event, and that is one for our students with special needs. The Office of Special Education and Related Services is hosting a special trick-or-treat event. Students and families can come to S.H. Clark Academy from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. that Wednesday, and they will be prepared to have a great night out together. There would be plenty of candy, games, prizes, and probably a fun surprise or two for those that attend. If you need more specific information, you can call the Office of Special Education and Related Services at 757-393-8792. Finally, I have one calendar plan and reminder for our families. Tuesday, November 4 is a professional development day for staff members, so there will be no school for students that day. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. That completes my report.
Thanks so much, Dr. Bracy. Before our Vice Chair moves into closed meetings, a reminder for our camera crew that remain, because we have to come back out and close the meeting once we finish with closed session for that. My Vice Chair.
I move that the board enters into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Consideration of Personnel Matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A.1, and consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter requiring the advice by such counsel as permitted under subsection A.8.
Motion made, and second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Roll call Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. We will now move into closed meeting. We will now move into closed meeting.
The vice chair brings out a closed meeting.
I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
I have a motion, we have a second. Second by Ms. Futreal. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks so much. Do we have any further comments or business about board members at this time? Seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned.